All right, first we're gonna go with roll call. Let's go with myself, Lee Collick, serving as chair, calling in from Royal Oak. Next up, we have Brett Nelson.
From present from Troy.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Kyle DeBuck, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have Commissioner Monica Hunt.
Trustee. Sorry, here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. We have City Manager Paul Brake, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Also present, we have Julie Rudd. Finance Director, serving as Board Chief Administrative Officer, Board Secretary, Board Treasurer. Thank you. We have Lisa Genord, Financial Analyst Pension Technician.
President.
We have Tom Michau, Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. We have Terry Gurlik, Investment Advisor with SEI. All right, thank you. Okay, now we'll go back to public comment.
There are no members in the audience, so there was no public comment today.
Perfect, thank you. Next up is request that the board approve the agenda for April 16th, 2021. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve that agenda. Do I have support? Support by Brett? All in favor? I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is request that the board approve the minutes for March 19th, 2021. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve the minutes. Is there support?
Brett's sports.
Supports, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes, Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Next is request that the board consider for approval adjustments, applications, benefits as follows. There are no adjustments. Under applications, we have Christopher Anetta of the Police Department, PCO, a bargaining unit, 25 years of service time. Amended retirement date of April 16th, 2021. Eligible based on years of service and age. Christopher Anetta requests an estimated pension payment in accordance with the following policy. Effective January 1st, 2020, the board will allow for payment of an estimated pension payment for certain new retirees that make the election due to hardship. The estimated calculation will be calculated by taking 75% of the straight line calculation using average base wage only. Years of service and applicable multipliers. Any under slash over payments will be paid slash collected. This policy will be available to those employees with the retirement date of January 1st, 2020 through August 31st, 2020. At the July 10th, 2020 Retirement Board Meeting, Lee Collick motioned to continue paying estimated payments from January 1st to August 31st each year as long as the criteria is met by the applicant. Under benefits, we have Brian Z of the Police Department, PCO, a bargaining unit, 26 years and six months of service credit. Retirement date of January 3rd, 2021. Selected option D, 75% to surviving spouse, 63, 62, 69 monthly payment with withdrawal of contributions and interest, 84, 652, 53. I'm gonna go ahead and make the motion to approve the adjustments, applications, and benefits as listed. Is there support?
Sports.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes, Brett? Brett is a yes?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
And Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Actually, we have investments. I'm gonna turn it over to Terry.
Hey, thank you. Good morning, everybody. Can I share my screen?
Yes, you already have the ability to share your screen.
Excellent. Okay, thank you. I'm gonna just do that then. Here we go. Hopefully, everybody can see that. Okay, so I'm gonna talk even though, well, I reported on February last time and I'll just briefly touch on March. I wanna kind of focus on the quarter since it is the end of the quarter. And I don't have a full report deck here for you in terms of commentary and the deep dive. That'll be at the next. I'll have that at the next meeting for the quarter, but we do have the numbers. And as you've seen a moment, the numbers are good. Continue the very strong rebound in the markets that we've been talking about over the last several months. And if there was ever an argument against market timing the last 12 months, really, really underscore how hard it is to the time the market, who would have thought a year ago that we would, we would end up seeing the types of returns you'll see for the last 12 months that we'll look at in a minute. But first of all, for the quarter, just very briefly, as you can see on the, on the charts on the right-hand side here, looking at the, the orange bars. First quarter continued another strong quarter for the equity markets, particularly small cap, as you can see, the small cap marketplace up over 12% for the quarter. The distinct difference from what was the pattern we saw last year was that if you look down towards bonds and you look at investment grade bonds, we've seen investment grade bonds actually down 3.4% as a market. And that's because we've had a strong rise in interest rates. The markets have been focused on the, 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 the very strong expected economic rebound this year. And worried about the Fed being, continue to be accommodative, all the fiscal stimulus, a little more worry about, worried about inflation. And as a result, we've seen interest rates, interest rates rise. So again, as rates rise, prices decline. And so we're starting to see some, some headwinds there in the, in the, in the bond category. We don't think that'll continue for very long. I think rates will go higher, but we don't think that we're gonna have an extended period of inflation, but could have some near-term bump in inflation here. I'm already seeing the signs in, in the near term. But there's still, once we get past the effect of the stimulus from the tax pay rebates and various other programs. As we get later in the year, going into the following year, we think that inflationary pressures may moderate a little bit. There's still a lot of slack in the, in the economy. It's not like we're at full employment. We've still got a ways to go. But in the near term, we expect to see some pressure and we expect to see some pressure on, on interest rates as, as a result. And that's, that's gonna be the theme that investors are most focused on will be the extent of the recovery. The strength of the recovery, we could be seeing a 6% plus GDP type of growth this year, stronger than we've had in many, 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 many years and decades. And of course, that's off of a very suppressed base, you know, from 12 months ago. So investors are gonna be focused on the extent of that recovery and gonna be focused on inflation as, as inflation concerns, at least for the next several months. We go to the next page here, you can see the portfolio began the year at 174.8 million dollars. Had 2.7 million dollars in cash flows out, pay benefits. And but had a gain of 5.4 million, leaving the, the, the fund now at a balance of 177, just over 177.5 million dollars. And if you look at the last column at the top, you can see a year ago, the, the fund value was 134.8 million. And then since that time, there was almost $10 million paid out benefits. But over the last 12 months, or over the last 12 months, it's been over $52 million in gain. So we're really restoring the, the portfolio, portfolio value to, to, to a good, good, strong position. And if we go to the next page here, you can see the returns. The month was a good month, up 1.45% on a gross basis. About 3.2%, 3.1% net for the, for the quarter. And as you look back over the one year, you can see, you know, the remarkable recovery in the markets and in the portfolio. The portfolio is up over 40% on a one-year basis. Also comfortably ahead of its benchmark, which was up just under 37%. So strong absolute and strong relative returns. That has counted, has, has, as you can see, had an effect on the three and five-year numbers and, and even longer term since inception. Compounding out at a very nice return in excess of the actuarial required return. So that should help fund the status. Although I know you, you may recall, you don't recognize all the gains and losses in any one year. You smooth that out over time. But there's still, that should help to, those values should help to support the funded status of the system. If we go back to the three-month or year-to-date column and you look down at the green bars, you can see equities continuing to move ahead. As, as I mentioned at the opening, total equity portfolio up just about 5.3%. And as you, and of course, we're indexed in, in large-cap domestic equities and small-cap domestic equities. But you can see that strong small-cap performance up over, over 7% for the, for, for the quarter. International markets, managers did, did a nice job, as you can see, up 3.78% for the quarter. So lagging what the US markets did, but within the international portfolios, the managers did a good job and, and were ahead of their benchmarks. By, by an appreciable amount, both for the world equity strategy as well as the emerging markets equity funds, which produce an almost 4% versus 2.3% for the bench, their benchmark. We look back before we go on to fix thing, how we look, just take a moment, take, look back up at that green bar. Total equity returns the last 12 months, up over 62%. Don't often get to talk about numbers like that. Just a reflection of how hard we were hit 12 months ago as a result of COVID and how much ground we've, we've recovered as a market and as an economy over the last 12, over the last 12 months. And you can see small cap almost doubling up and over 97% in the, in the last 12, the last 12 months. Now turning to fixed income, you see a little different picture. As I mentioned, just rates have risen. As a result, fixed income, investor-grade fixed income, we're looking at negative returns as a result of that. So you can see the investment-grade domestic fixed income portfolio was down 3.6% for the quarter. Actually, a little bit behind the benchmark, which was down 3.4%. But as you can see, over time, the managers have done a good job relative to the benchmarks, not too concerned about the 20 basis, 30 basis point shortfall there. But the, the story really is in terms of absolute returns, starting to see some, some negative returns as a result of the market environment. Emerging market debt, which is even more interest rate sensitive, we saw that's, that, that sell-off pretty hard. Down 5.5%, managers pretty much align with their benchmark. And you can see those still over the trailing one year, up 18.7%. But tough, tough quarter there as interest rates rose around the world. High-yield bonds continue to, to, to their recovery of another 3.4%. Again, managers doing a good job relative to the benchmarks. They handily out exceeded their benchmark, which was up less than 1%. And, and that recovery now you see reflected in the one-year number of almost 30% over the last 12 months for the high-yield bond portfolio. Core fixed income, decent return here, 1.9% for the quarter. I may recall that over the last 12 months, you saw a little bit of weakness in, in, in the real estate market as a result of COVID and concerns. That's starting to shake itself out and as you can see, getting a bit of recovery here, up almost 2% for the quarter. Managers again have done a good job there by being underweight the hardest-hit areas of the real estate market. Having virtually no hotel exposure and, and, and large retail exposure is very small as well, relatively small, I should say. And overweight the, the areas that continue to grow, like we're housing for the Amazons of the world and other online marketplaces. Structured credit fund continues a very strong rebound and we had started investing that, not that long ago. And, and invested right into the, put the money to work right at, at the time that the, the markets were falling apart. It's a very volatile asset class. So we saw some negative returns there at the beginning, but now have dug themselves out of the hole there. Up 13.7% for the, for the quarter. So that recovery continues nicely as well. And that specialized area, the fixed income marketplace. And then finally, private equity, up 1.5%. But again, not a lot to talk about there. And I'll talk about this in more detail at the next meeting. Talk about how much invested, how much committed, how much, so we'll break that down a little more. But right now, a very fairly small amount of money invested at $416,000, but off to, off to a, a, a good start here. And that is really it. The next page is you go, we'll go back at the, you take a look at the annual returns, if you like, the calendar returns. But that is, that's my report. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Terry. Does anyone have any questions for Terry? All right, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to receive and file. Is there support?
Brett's sports.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes, Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Brings us to legal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As you can see, I'm looking at you virtually, you're virtually looking at me. So my legal report is virtually the same virtual report that I gave last meeting. The Open Meetings Act allows us to continue doing this meeting virtually. And until you you know, have a, a change in an emergency or a change in health situations, then I think this will be kind of the new norm for a while. So although it's not new anymore, I guess it's just the way it is. My recommendation would be is to receive and file the correspondence contained under legal report as presented on your agenda. Unless you have any questions, that re, that concludes my legal report.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Tom? I'm gonna make a motion to receive and file. Then do I have support? Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes, Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, thank you. That brings us to other, the annual advisor and consultant review, which in accordance with board policy, each year compare one existing advisor consultant with prospective advisors consultants. The investment advisor is due for review. We're looking to continue discussion from last month. I don't know if anyone has had any thoughts on it. I have chatted a little bit offline, had a few discussions. What is everyone's feelings on perhaps having the consultants prepare statements based on how they how they performed in regards to the performance measurement goals of the policy?
Hey, Lee, are both, are both guys still in the meeting or do they check?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna suggest, would you care them to be in the meeting? Would you like them to step out?
I don't have any problem with them being here. I know last week we had changed it. I mean, I'm, I'm 100% comfortable saying anything in front of them. If anybody would rather have them leave, I'm not opposed to that either, but I, I kind of like the idea of having them prepare something and make a little presentation to us instead of us just kind of critiquing, critiquing them without, without anything coming from them first. So thoughts on that or?
Seems reasonable.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to, to table this with the intent that they will come up with a short presentation based on how they have done, whether they have, you know, met, exceeded or, or not, the, the performance measurement goals of, of the policies and bring that back to us next meeting. Is there support?
Yeah, Brett's sports.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Julie, did you want to discuss the, the training budget request?
Um, yes, this is a request of the trustees to establish a budget for training for fiscal year 21, 22. And the current budget has $1,250 and year-to-date, and nothing has been spent.
Okay, I know it's obviously been a strange year for that, but I'm gonna make a motion to continue with that same amount, if that's acceptable to you, Julie. Okay, do I have support? Brett supports, thank you. All in favor? I'm a yes, Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Anything else to add, Julie?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Let's take a look at the date for the next meeting. Tentatively, it would be Friday, May 21st at 8:00 AM. Does anyone have any issues with that date?
Works fine, works fine for SEI.
All right, thank you. The date of the next meeting will be set then at, is Friday, May 21st, 2021 at 8:00 AM.
Terrific.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Do I have support?
Brett's sports.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes, Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Meeting is adjourned at 8:25 AM.
Okay, well, thank you all. Good to see you. Stay safe and I do hope and expect to see you in person at some point this year.
Sounds good. You as well, Terry. Take care.
All right, take care. Bye-bye.
All right, I'm gonna call to order the Retiree Healthcare Investment Board meeting Friday, April 16th, 2021, called to order at 8:25 AM. We will begin with roll call, myself, Lee Collick, serving as chair, attending from Royal Oak, Michigan. Brett Nelson, who is vice chair.
Present from Troy.
Thank you. Commissioner Kyle DeBuck, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. Commissioner Monica Hunt, serving as trustee.
Present in Royal Oak.
Thank you. City Manager Paul Brake, serving as trustee.
Here in Royal Oak.
Thank you. Also present, we have Finance Director Julie Rudd, serving as Board Chief Administrative Officer, Board Secretary, Board Treasurer. Thank you. We have Lisa Genord, serving as Financial Analyst Pension Technician.
President.
Thank you. We have Tom Michau, serving as Board Attorney.
President.
Thank you. We have Brian Green, and Co. He is our Investment Advisor.
President.
All right, thank you. Brings us to public comment. Which we have none. Next. I'm going to make a motion to approve the agenda for April 16th, 2021. Is there support?
Brett.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I am a yes, Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes for March 19th, 2021. Is there support? Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor? I'm a yes, Brett? Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, brings us to investments. I'll turn it over to Brian.
All right, I'll bring up the March 31 update. So Terry covered a bit from a, from a capital market standpoint, you know, Q1 was continued good news across the board for investors from an equity market standpoint. It wasn't the greatest news for investors from a fixed income standpoint, because we did see interest rates start to rise. Just kind of on the backs of fears of, of increasing inflation and I'd probably expect to see some, some higher numbers there, but I didn't think they should cause a whole lot of concern for for individuals. But the one thing we did, we have seen so far here this year, and it's really a repeat of what went on in the fourth quarter, is as we have seen interest rates start to rise and we have seen the economy start to reopen, and I recognize this is kind of gonna be in fits and starts, particularly based on some of the stuff we're seeing around here in terms of case count and, you know, bone month setting up triage tents outside. But the big shift you've seen for this quarter and for the last six months, so from October 1st to present, has been smaller versus larger, so small-cap stocks instead of large-cap stocks and value instead of growth. And that has been a complete reversion or a complete 180 from what it's been for the last couple of years, when it's really been bigger is better and growth has dominated. And you can see this bear out, for example, this, as I was looking at things this morning, was pretty interesting to me. So these color charts that we have in the top right-hand corner of the market commentary, they're shaded, so darker green is the better performer, darker red is, is the lower performer. So it kind of grades from dark red to, to, to dark green in terms of, you can see from a visual standpoint where the best performing asset class is. And if you go back and look at 2020 as an example, you know, obviously, large cap was the place to be. Large cap as a whole was up just shy of 21%, but really the best performing part of the market last year was large-cap growth stocks. And that was a repeat of what went on in 2019 and 2018 and 2017. And the difference between growth and value last year, you know, you're talking 30% difference in small-cap value versus small-cap growth. 36% difference between small-cap value, or sorry, between large-cap value and large-cap growth, just a huge dispersion in the returns. Well, look what's happened so far here in the first quarter of 2020. Small-cap value stocks as an example are up 21% in the first quarter. Small-cap as a whole was up just shy of 20% last year. So you saw performance in the first three months of the year out of small-cap value stocks actually beat small-cap as a whole for last year. And it's a 16, almost 17% difference in performance between small-cap value and small-cap growth. On the large-cap side, you've got a better than 11% return out of value stocks, so interest rates have risen a little bit. Things like financials have come back into play because banks are lending at a higher rate. You know, we're still, we're still paying you on your balances, right? If you have a money in your savings account, that number is still zero, maybe .01 on a monthly basis. But your auto loan, your home loan, you know, any lending activity you're doing today versus a few months ago is more expensive. So banks are making more money. So this is where you've seen this tremendous resurgence in value-oriented names versus growth that's really kind of cooled off so far this year. You know, that being said, if you look at longer-term returns, you know, look at, for example, you've got the Russell 1,000 Growth Index versus the Russell 1,000 Value. So this would be large value and large growth. You know, there's a 10% difference in performance between those two asset classes in the last five years. So even though you've seen this tremendous recovery in terms of value outperforming growth in the last six months, you know, that tide or that trend that's existed for the last couple of years is still really telling in those longer-term numbers. But this shift that we've seen in the fourth quarter of last year and first quarter of this year, let me get to the performance numbers in a couple of minutes here, is, is something that's really benefited the portfolio. You know, of note, it's pretty amazing to me to see the increase you've seen in interest rates. You may look and say, you know, as an investor, even as a long-term investor, the idea of, of buying a 10-year treasury bond, so loaning the federal government my money for 10 years, earning 1.74% is, you know, is laughable. We can think of years past where that number was 5% or 6%, but back in December, it was .91. And back in parts of, of the summer of 2020, those numbers were .5 to .6%. So you've seen a massive increase in interest rates in the last kind of nine months or so, as the markets reacted to the, the process. As the markets reacted to the the prospects of higher inflation and the possibility of an overheated economy. Just as we talk about things from recovery standpoint. Since we've added this chart, this is one for me that's always been really, really powerful, right? This is the, I look at this as the report card of the decision to bond for the unfunded liability. And whether that's been a profitable venture over the last four years. And, you know, in my view, it has been, you know, if we're talking about debt service or, you know, the interest rates on those underlying bonds. So kind of sub-four percent, the trust has generated an eight-and-a-half percent return over that time period. So obviously, we want to have something that's that's ahead of the actuary assumed rate return of seven point two five. And if the market didn't provide us that opportunity, then we definitely want to make sure that we've got a return that's at or above the cost of those bonds that were issued. And this has been nothing but successful in the in the last four years, since that's an important piece of the report card. In terms of the decisions made on the retiree healthcare trust. So where are we from a performance standpoint? Added a new page to the report, this is something you'll see every month. And every monthly flash going forward, every quarterly, this, rather than looking at individual at individual managers, we're looking at individual asset classes. So top line's still going to be the same, total fund, how the overall retiree healthcare portfolio do. You know, for the month, was up about two point five five percent, a little over point nine percent ahead of the benchmark. On a one-year basis, this is where you're seeing that meaningful recovery, up thirty seven, almost thirty eight percent. And we are just over one and a half percent ahead of the policy index. And then on a three-year and sense inception basis, and that sense inception is really the last four years, that's from April one of seventeen to present. Still seeing underperformance over that time period of one point two two percent, that's the difference between these two figures here. But what's encouraging for me is with this recovery you're seeing in the quarter and in the last year, is this gap here has actually closed. From two point three percent to the one point two two that is today. So you're seeing a meaningful recovery in performance over the long run because of the recovery you're seeing in the portfolio here in the in the last few quarters. So where does that come from? Domestic equity has obviously been the the best performer, up almost a little bit eight point three for the year. Sorry, for the for the quarter. About two percent ahead of benchmark, up sixty-three percent in the last year ahead of benchmark. International equities lagged a little bit, gave up a little bit of ground for the quarter, still up thirty-eight percent for the year. These numbers are just kind of staggering to think about, but remember, we're coming from really the market lows in April of last year. It's hard to believe that that was was over a year ago. And just the the run-up and recovery you've seen from from an equity market standpoint and recovery of new highs and setting new records on a on a daily basis. Fixed income outperforming across the board, you know, as you've mentioned, gave up a little bit of ground as markets. As interest rates rose in the last couple of quarters, but actually holding in really well. Been a great contributor to outperformance in the last year, five point eight percent of its benchmark. Real estate still pulling numbers in here, but really positive, really encouraging here. Everybody's kind of held their breath on real estate to wait to see what's gonna happen, going back to work, what's gonna happen with. All right. Back on, call drop. You guys hear me?
Yes.
So real estate, positive contributor across the board, you know, a lot of us, a lot of investors were kind of holding their breath, wondering what was gonna happen with commercial real estate in the US. As things just basically froze last year, you know, I will tell you, we're seeing newfound activity, a lot of purchasing, a lot of. Properties trading hands around the country as investors are looking to deploy capital. So this has been a nice tailwind for the pre-sa portfolio, a little over two percent for the year, still pulling in benchmark information. And longer-term results there continue to be strong, and then cash, you know, still looking at something just north of zero. This is obviously always going to be a very, very small amount of the balance on a on a month-to-month basis, just making sure we have enough there to cover. Projected benefit payment needs, just to make sure that we can reimburse for healthcare premiums. So from a manager-by-manager standpoint, so on this page, we look at things really from an asset class level. And then this is what you're used to seeing on a monthly and quarterly basis. Here we look at individual managers. And where you're really seeing that recovery and performances in some of those value-oriented managers like Sizer, you know, four percent ahead for the quarter. And in line in the last year, and Cora, almost four percent ahead for the quarter. And right in line in the last year, it's just crazy to see some of these numbers up, you know, eighty-eight, eighty-nine percent out of some of these individual managers. From a fixed income standpoint, when you look at the individual managers, here's where you see that impact of a rise in interest rates. You're starting to see red numbers from a fixed income standpoint, but longer-term results there continue to be very, very strong. So the moral of the story is, you know, as we've seen this recovery of value and seen this recovery and resurgence in smaller versus larger names. That's been a great benefit to the portfolio, and you're seeing near-term performance well ahead of benchmark, and that's helping to close the gap on a on a long-term standpoint. So with that, that's the extent of my prepared comments, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anyone have any questions for Brian? Thank you, Brian. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to receive and file. Is there support?
Brett supports.
Support by Brett, thank you. All in favor, I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I guess I'll either, I'll talk to Julie or Lisa. In regards to maybe sending out a, an email to the advisors and then also to the to the board members about. Our expectations for next month's meeting then. All right, thank you, Brian. Brings us to legal. Tom, did you have anything here?
Yeah, no formal comments, receive and file, the the memo, and be well. Thanks.
All right, thank you as well. Make a motion to receive and file. Do I support?
Brett supports.
Brett supports. My man, always there for me. All in favor, I'm a, I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Other, is this gonna be the? Same thing, Julie? Anything to add?
Yeah, same comments.
Okay, sounds good. I'm gonna go ahead and make that same motion then to keep that at the same amount it's been in the past moving forward. Is there support? Thank you, Brett. All in favor, I'm a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Anything else, Julie?
No, thank you.
All right, thank you. The date of the next meeting has been set Friday, May twenty first, twenty twenty one at eight thirty AM. We're immediately following the pension board meeting. As I said, I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion to adjourn. Do I have support? Brett supports. All in favor, I am a yes. Brett?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Paul?
Yes.
Monica?
Yes.
All right, well, thank you very much, everyone. Stay healthy and we'll see you next month.
You guys.
Good luck, Brett.
Thank you.